We will call to order the June meeting of the ZBA. Roll call.
Yep.
Berg.
Yeah.
Koleski.
Here.
Jacobitz.
Here.
Elia's absent. Miller.
Here.
Berthold.
Here.
You have a quorum.
We have a quorum. We're all set.
Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from our May meeting. You had a copy here in your packet. Are there any questions or any corrections on the minutes?
Two that I noticed. Under the first item, approval of minutes moved as a February oh six, should be twenty twenty four minutes. Were approved. And I believe case number twenty four eleven, top of the next page, was that, was that a dimensional variance? I thought that is a temporary use for the problem.
It was a temporary use. Temporary use.
So those are the two.
Okay.
Other ones I would move for approval of minutes is correct.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any questions? Need a roll call or just an eye opening?
Just not.
Okay. All favor approval. Aye.
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 Opposed. Minutes are approved as corrected. Next item on the agenda is for seven, three, zero, Comoli Lane, temporary use. Do we have someone to speak on that? Come up and give us your name and give us a brief what you'd like to do.
Okay. My name is Angela Call. I'm the activity director at Linwood Manor. And I would like to do a car show for our residents at our facility. We have veterans and geriatrics. And I would love for them to be able to go out and explore the cars in our parking lot.
Brief explanation. I like that.
And it's just one day with a possible rain date.
Correct.
Okay, so either August third or possibly August tenth.
We're hoping for the third.
Okay. And it's not, it's mostly in the morning, morning and early afternoon.
Correct.
Nine to two. Okay.
Questions? Anybody?
I have. I've done one car show before. Actually, I did one last year. Finding out I needed to have a permit. I wanted to make sure everything was all in line. So I've done a lot of homework.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience question on this? Speak on this? Anybody online? I don't know if we have anybody online?
This is, this is mostly for the residents.
Absolutely. Yes, we have veterans. No, we have veterans. And their family members will probably coming too to bring them out.
If there are no questions, I'll go down our list of that we need to look at here. Temporary use permits compatible with the variance provisions of this chapter. What kind of will see that as we go along here. The temporary use is reasonable use plan. Compatible with the general plan, land use designation and zoning classification. The proposed use will be compliant. If it can be assured that the adequate alternative parking is available. I assume there will be parking available for other people. As the vehicles are proposed occupy required off-street parking for this site. So long as we have adequate parking, otherwise we're good. Number three, temporary use will not impede the reasonable use of the land or the orderly development of the land in the immediate vicinity. It's all going to be contained in the property, therefore will not impede use of neighbors' property and should be fine. Number four, temporary use shall not adversely affect adjacent used buildings or other structures. And same thing like we said, it's not going to affect the others. It has, it's all self-contained in their property. So not an issue there. Temporary use will not endanger the public health, safety and general welfare. This will be contained in the parking lot of the property. Staff helping the residents to see the cars have their own safety measures per their business. So not seeing an issue there. Number six provisions for equi-traffic access, circulation, off-street parking, pedestrian safety have been provided and will be maintained during the operation, use or activity. The proposed temporary use relies on parking lot across the street for staff visitors. We said the applicant needs to supply staff a letter of permission from the owner of the property across the street prior to undertaking the use. Is that something that's been done?
Not yet. I, there's actually two different, there's the VA building. I'm gonna, Ray has not gotten back to me yet. And then Chris at ProMedica.
Okay. So realizing those of me need to be before the event. Okay. So we'll find yes on those, knowing that they must be complied with before the event. The event is meant for patients of the medical office and would be contained to the circulation and required area. So we're set there. Number seven, the grant of the temporary use permit is made subject to these conditions necessary to provide the general welfare, not the individual, excuse me, individual welfare of any particular applicant. Name like we said above, it is for the patients there. And based on finding that, we can take a motion.
So move. Support.
We have a motion and we have support. Do we have any question on the motion? If not, roll call vote. Jacobitz.
Yes.
Miller.
Yeah.
Koleski.
Yes.
Berg.
Yes.
Berthold.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. They're all set. As long as you get those letters you need into the, into the, okay?
All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, thirteen fifty seven South Main, another temporary use. We have someone to speak on that?
Yes, Eric Potter. We're just requesting another temporary use due fireworks tent as we have in the past.
Is, this is for a five-year we're looking at? No?
So the request. So there, there was a bit of a hard time to get hold of Mr. Potter to figure out how he was proposing the other one. I did receive two pictures from you, so I put the one that was by the bank. So this would not be a five-year old renewal. He is updating his request to what I put in your packet and what I emailed you. So this is the red square and then the next picture you have there is a more expanded of the area. We discussed this. He needs to stay out of the right-of-way. So that's why there's so many dimensions that you see on there.
Jeremiah, I need some context here.
Yeah.
This is just, this is at the south side of the mall, just west of the
This is
Buffalo Wild Wings parking lot.
This is Buffalo Wild Wings McDonald's. Okay.
Yeah, we were, we were there from twenty twenty to twenty-two. Last year we switched to the other, the bank property because they had thought they'd sold it or whatever to the Dairy Queen. And then they're not doing it. So we go back to that spot.
Buffalo Wild Wings McDonald's.
Works, works a lot better traffic-wise and parking is right there.
Do you want to go back to this?
Yeah. So yeah, we did the one year in front of the bank last year. Every other year we've been there. And we did downsize the tent. We're made aware of that.
Yeah, there's just about forty-five feet there between the edge of the parking and the right-of-way. So you gotta stay within that.
And, and Jeremiah let me know that. So I was able to get the tent to scale it back down. And then I did, so the six feet is roughly what the spikes will be out. So the tent itself won't be in the right-of-way. None of it will, but I scaled it back. So then forty-two feet with the spikes would be total.
And what are your hours of operation? Because on here it says six AM to one AM.
Probably not that.
Okay. Be specific.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, yeah. So in the, in the past, it kind of depends on how much traffic's coming through all that. But, and then it ramps up through the fourth. So every other day, other than like the fourth weekend, probably be like ten AM would be the earliest to like ten, eleven PM. And then on the fourth, it would probably end up being midnight, one AM, just depending on traffic. That's, that's what's in the past. And it changes just based on like when the fourth falls. So like last year, we didn't stay open that late because the fourth wasn't.
First, we, we will, we need to consider and approve specific times as opposed to, well, it depends on what day it is and the weather's good and who shows up. So
Okay.
And six AM to one AM is boy pushing the envelope there, I would think.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, yeah, so we wouldn't be, in this location, we wouldn't be open. I mean
What are McDonald's hours? You know?
Right, right. Yeah. Well, is that one, is that one twenty-four hours?
I don't think so. It used to be, but I don't think
They went back.
Yeah, there, I think they're like eleven o'clock.
Okay. Yeah, and that, that location, they said ten, ten to midnight, if we like set the time would be, would be plenty of time.
Okay. So looking ten AM to twelve PM.
Correct. It's a, it's the same tank company we've used and in the past in this location and
Jeremiah, the fire department has, has reviewed this and
or not this new plan. I will have Eric do it immediately.
Okay.
But they have been in that spot in the past.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Any questions, audience? Nobody? Any questions for the mayor?
Mayor's here. Oh, yes, she is. Okay.
I guess she's just watching.
Alright, so you know how to get with the fire chief before you, after you're set up and he needs to walk through and
Right, right. Before we actually get, we can't sell till we have that sticker. Yes, yes, very true. Yep.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we will go down through our criteria. Temporary use permits compatible with the various provisions of this chapter. This land is zone commercial property, so it fits into their retail sales. Not a problem. Yes for that. Two, temporary use is a reasonable use of land compatible with the general plan, land use designation and zoning. Once again, it is commercial and in the area, so not a problem there. Number three, temporary use will not impede the reasonable use of the land or the orderly development of the land in the immediate vicinity. Once again, the tent's being placed on land that's the property of the mall and will not impede anything. And we did have a letter from the mall from somebody at the mall or whoever owns that area anymore that they approved of this. Number four, temporary use shall not adversely affect the adjacent used buildings and/or structures. Based on the drawings, shouldn't be any problem there. Far enough away from everything, not, not an issue. Number five, temporary use will not endanger the public health, safety, general welfare. Once again, we have the least he must follow these regulations for all fireworks and get the approvals needed. So if they're approval, we are fine with that. Number six, provisions for equi-traffic access, circulation, off-street parking, pedestrian safety have been provided will be maintained during the operation of the use or activity. There's plenty of room for traffic to circulate around there, plenty of off-street parking. We do have recommend that there be signings placed that orient pedestrians safely to the tent as in past years.
Okay.
Okay. Number seven, granted, the temporary use permit is made subject to these conditions necessary for preserve the general welfare, not the individual welfare of any particular applicant. Once again, if it's granted, this should be condition of operations. We have the hours and they'll need to get the approval from the fire department and all the others. But I would find yes for that. Therefore, we can entertain a motion.
Okay, I would move the approval of this request for temporary use.
Support.
We have a motion and we have support. Any questions on the motion? Roll call vote on the motion. Miller.
Yes.
Koleski.
Yes.
Jacobitz.
Yes.
Berg.
Who are you?
I don't know.
Now, now it's your turn.
Yes.
Okay.
Berthold.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Maybe these name tags, maybe these name tags can be on this side.
Thank you.
Definitely the name tags on this side, is it?
Thank you.
I don't see. Do we have anybody here to speak for the six ninety Riverside Avenue request? I know who spoke last time and I don't see her here, so this is the time here.
It's a renewal. I think you can just I think it's a removal.
Yeah.
We can just like proceed with it without them presenting again. We have experience with it.
And it's a pretty straightforward.
Very much so, yeah.
Discussion is about proceeding with this. Normally we look for the applicant to be here. This is for a five-year request because it's identical to what they did last year, same location, same event. Based on that, I don't see a reason we can't go ahead and go down through this. Is there anyone here in the audience to speak on this? Okay. If there's no objections, then I'll proceed down through the criteria and we can go from there. It's gonna sound a little repetitive. It's the third temporary use we've had. Number one, the temporary use permit is compatible with the various provisions of this chapter. That'll take us on to the next one, that the temporary use is reasonable use of the land compatible with general plan, land use designation and zoning classification. The proposed request appears to comply with all this. Once again, it's on their own property, so not an issue there. Number three, temporary use will not impede the reasonable use of land, orderly development of the land, immediate vicinity. It's going to be self-contained in their property. So should not impede anything of the neighbor's property. Number four, temporary use shall not adversely affect the adjacent uses building or other structures. Once again, it's on their own property, so there should not be any issues with neighbors. Number five, the temporary use will not endanger the public health, safety or general welfare. It is located in the rear of the property. It would be away from the main road. So not a problem there. Number six, provisions for equi-traffic access, circulation, off-street parking, pedestrian safety have been provided and will be maintained throughout the operation of the activity. We've been told that the business will be closed for that day. The parking lot will be used solely for the fundraiser function. The applicant also stated that the church located next door will allow them to use their parking lot as well. I assume they did that last time. I don't remember any issues. Number seven, the grant of the temporary use permit is made subject to these conditions necessarily to preserve general welfare, not the individual welfare of any particular applicant. Staff does not find any conditions needed to be placed upon this. They have everything listed as far as their operation, what they're expecting to do. So I would find for that. I guess I do have one other question. There was no issues with last year's event, was there?
No, I received no complaint.
Okay. Right. So based on all that, we can entertain a motion.
Your turn.
Yeah. I go ahead and propose that we go ahead and grant this particular appeal as written and allow them to have a temporary use permit for the next five years.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Miller.
Yes.
Koleski.
Yes.
Jacobitz.
Yes.
Berthold.
Yes.
Mr. Berg.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Okay.
Thank you.
We have no old business. Is there any future business anything we need to discuss? Where does our July meeting fall with the Fourth of July? I don't know.
It's the second.
Second.
Tuesday.
Okay. But we have no problem there. Okay.
Our Fourth of July meeting this year is on the second.
Our Fourth of July meeting is on the second. Alright. Anything from the audience for public comment? I guess everybody's here for the planning commission and as opposed to the zoning board. Hearing none, we adjourn the meeting and planning commission will begin in approximately ten minutes. Uh, hearing done, uh, we adjourn the meeting and planning commission will begin in approximately ten minutes.
Folks, we will call to order the June fourth meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. Uh, if we could have the roll call, please.
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Love?
Present.
Leatherby?
Present.
Johnson?
Present.
Watson?
Present.
Mr. Taylor is absent. Mr. Gauss?
You have.
Of course, thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes from our May seventh meeting. Commissioners, you have a copy of those minutes. I presume you've had an opportunity to review them. Are there any additions or corrections to the May seventh minutes? If there are none, we would entertain a motion for their approval.
Support.
A motion and support. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May minutes are approved. Next item on agenda is case twenty four twelve, uh, which is a zoning exception permit and a site plan review for nine twenty six North Main Street. That is the former Clark Gas Station on the corner of North Main Street and Santa Heights Drive. Um, we have a note from Jeremiah that we do not have the uh, updated site plan from the applicant.
As you recall, or may recall, you uh, approved a zoning exception permit for a a remodel, reconfiguration addition to this gas station before. Uh, and so.
Like three years ago.
A couple of years ago, maybe. Um, a- and so they and that expired, and they've subsequently decided they want to proceed with that, and as you may have noticed, they've closed the station pending the remodel. Uh, in fact, they've closed it so long that before your next meeting, they will, or maybe by now, they've lost their non-conforming status, or it's not non-conforming status. They lost their current approval, because if zoning exception use goes vacant for six months or more, then uh, it needs a new permit. And so that's the case he, here now, so they can't just reopen. And, and when they brought their site plan in, we still had, we had never received the required revisions to the site plan that you uh, had required previously, and so we told them that that site plan was not adequate, please bring back the site plan with the required revisions. They did not do that in time or still have not done that, Jeremy?
Um, they didn't, they didn't finish them. They did submit something that was not in time, but it was not correct.
Right, so we're, that's still pending, so unfortunately, trusting that they were going to bring it in in time for the meeting, we had scheduled the public hearing, so you do need to conduct the public hearing tonight, continue that to a future date, and we'll put it back on the agenda when we receive the updated site plan.
Okay, but with the understanding that we don't have any detailed information, in fact, no information before us at all on this topic, is there anybody in the audience either present or online that wishes to address the planning commission on this matter? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on that topic and would entertain a motion to table this particular.
So just to be clear, they have to come back to us for approval again?
Yes, they have to come back to us for a complete approval from the beginning, yeah.
Yeah.
Both site plan and, and zoning exception permit.
What's the zoning exception permit?
The gas station. And if no one objects, I would entertain a motion to table this until such time as we do have additional information.
So move.
Support.
A motion and support to table this particular item until we have received additional information. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very well. That was the only pseudo-action item on our agenda. Uh, we don't have any old business.
Uh, I have a question.
Yes, Mister Watson.
Um. We sit here and talk about all the time how we're rewriting the zoning ordinance, that's kind of.
On hold?
On hold, what's going on?
Oh, so we have now, um.
Aren't you on the committee?
Exactly.
Yeah, I know, I mean, and I'm disappointed with the progress, and we've told them that, and we've withheld, hey, they attempted to build, bill for more than um, the deliverables would justify, but we do now have, just as of last week, a purported draft of the total ordinance. But we, we've gone through, what, maybe four chapters so far, and given them, Jeremy and I.
Sorry, I'm just kind of irritated by this, I just wanted.
Yeah, well, you.
So I'm sure you are too, but.
You and I both. Well, two times, I think.
We only went through two sections, maybe?
You went through, I believe, only the audit.
Yeah.
And, and so we received a draft of some early chapters that we went through with them and gave them corrections, and they were substantial. And uh, now we've received back, a- after we had the discussion about the bill, we received back a draft of all, almost all the chapters, I think everything other than the non-conformities section purports to be. Um, i- and, and so we as, at staff level, have to go through that with them. We have a check-in meeting tomorrow. I, I mean, we won't be done re- reading all those by tomorrow, but uh, the, once we've agreed with their text, then they'll reschedule on, or schedule rather, another meeting of the steering committee to bring you up to speed on what, where they're at.
Shouldn't we have been involved in this all along?
Well, the idea is that they don't want to waste your time with something that staff doesn't even agree with, right? And so, we're trying to get to that point with them before uh, we, we convene your meeting again, and so far, we're only at, you know, we agree with four chapters. Uh, but we have met with they've narrowed the number of chapters from what it was, they've reduced it, you know, which was one of the goals, you know, fairly substantially. And we have been, you know, we've had work sessions with them on other things like the use matrix and.
So you and Jeremiah have had interaction with them.
Yeah.
Just been cold.
No, we've had monthly check-in meetings where we talk about particular sections, but then we don't get a deliverable. And so we've got nothing to review, and, and now we do have a theoretical deliverable, so we'll get through that, and then we'll have another steering committee meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the audience, either present or online, that wishes to address the planning commission on any topic? Hearing none, uh, just reminder, it came up, just our next regular meeting is, uh, what did I say? July second, Tuesday, July second, thank you. Uh, we would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Go move.
Support.
A motion and support, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.